We just thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. And we're thanking for the sunshine, just thank you for this community and what it represents. We're just thank you for the growth and development and all that's taking place. But we just pray you'd guide and direct us as we navigate through the needs of this city and the things that are taking place, guide and direct us in all we do and say in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I'm gonna turn my mic on so that people can hear me.
It's off now. Will you have everybody please turn their mics on?
Alright, so blue is on or red?
If it's red.
Red is on.
It's on.
Alright, everybody's mic needs to be red. Ms. Poole, you wanna hit your mic button? Excellent, alright. I'd like to start off with a few announcements tonight. To my right, we have Damon Phillips. He is going to be the interim city attorney. He's going to be up here kicking me underneath the table, so if you see me jump, that's his job. So, I wanted to introduce the new face before you guys tonight. I also have a list of 12 appointments for various different boards. What I'm going to do, then rather than read each one of these and take a motion and a second on each one of these, is I'm gonna read the entire list. I will then entertain a motion and a second, and then we will proceed to a vote, because I am supposed to get the advice and consent of city council on all appointments. And Laura's smiling at me because I'm supposed to say that.
Do we see what we're doing?
So, we are going to talk about these announcements, the appointments, and if anybody wants to talk about it, we will certainly stop and talk about it also. Alright, on the housing authority, I, number one, want to reappoint Mary Vincent for a four-year term, and number two, appoint Charlie Johnson to complete the term of Leo Clanton through June 17th, 2023. On the enhanced enterprise zone, number one, I want to appoint Rusty McGocklin to complete Harold Bench's term through July 13th, 2024. Number two, I would like to reappoint Todd, and I always love his name.
What would you ask me?
Thank you, and Alan Kunkel and Blake Cantrell. Number three, on planning and zoning, I want to reappoint Gary Wilson as council liaison for a one-year term. Number two, appoint Darren Campbell for a four-year term, and appoint Brian DeBrava to complete the term of Chris Crosby with the term expiring 11/2/24. Finally, on the board of adjustment, I want to reappoint Kelly Evans for a five-year term, reappoint Karen Pittman for a five-year term, appoint April Swanson to complete the term of Tori Conklin to expire February 20th, 23, and to appoint Randy Tindall to complete the term of Dolph Woodman to expire July 18th, 22. I would like a motion and a second to approve these appointments.
Motion.
Motion.
We've got a bunch of motions and a bunch of seconds, Laura.
Who was the second? Thank you.
Now, prior to a vote on this, is there any discussion by council that would like to be had about any of these appointments or any concerns that should be pointed out? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to have a, I don't think we need a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? These appointments will go forward. Alright, moving on to citizen participation. I would like to open this up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, you can come forward to the podium. You will be given five minutes to speak. Alright, seeing none, I'm in closed citizen participation. Move on to consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. The boards, commissions, and committee schedules. We have a city council meeting via Zoom on August 3rd, 2021. Why are we doing it via Zoom?
Because this is a special schedule, because of the tax levy, we have to do the tax levy later in the month.
Very good. Board of adjustments meeting on August 5th, 2021, planning and zoning meeting on August 9th, 2021, and the second city council meeting in August, August 17th, 2021. Moving on to old business, item number four on the agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-52 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving the final plat of Auburn Hills Phase 2 subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. The city presented on this last time, so hopefully we had a chance to get with them and ask questions. Is there any update from the city? Excellent. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-52.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. By ours, I mean yours. So please, as voting open, click refresh, place your vote, and hit submit. Excellent. Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to new business, item number five on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-53 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 9.1 acres from general commercial C2 to heavy manufacturing M2 located at 6330 West US Highway 60.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna do my best Karen impersonation tonight, so bear with me. S. Forman Realty Co. has applied to change the zoning classification of approximately 9.1 acres of property located at 6330 West US Highway 60 from general commercial to C2 to heavy manufacturing M2. The property subject to this rezoning application is currently occupied by a 12,000-square-foot building that was built prior to the city's annexation in 1978, just for a little historical reference. The applicant has expressed their intent to occupy the building. As mentioned, there is a change of use. The applicant's description of their business model is metal fabrication, steel tanks, and general manufacturing. Staff considers the proposed zoning map amendment rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, consistent with the trend of development in the vicinity of the site, compatible with the surrounding land uses, and able to be adequately served by our municipal facilities. Based upon this analysis, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions from council? Is that the former VLP bill?
Yes.
Is it being used right now, Andrew?
It's currently vacant, and it has been for, I believe, about two years.
You may have said that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Do we have any citizen comments? Seeing none, please remember that this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-54 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 92.85 acres from agricultural AG and general commercial C2 to Plan Development District PDD located at 3456 South Farm Road 101.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you continuing with the Karen impersonation?
I am.
Excellent. Take it away.
I am. Alright, United Bank and Trust owner and their representative, ATW LLC, have applied to change the zoning classification of approximately 92.85 acres of property at the location listed from agricultural AG and general commercial C2 to the Stone Creek Falls Plan Development District. The property subject to this rezoning application is comprised, as I said, of about 90 acres and is currently be used as farmland. So for this, if council recall, we've seen this property under consideration before. And what I want to mention about this particular development is the transportation improvements. So before, where we saw development considered but a hesitancy or an unwillingness to make the required traffic improvements, we have a development here that is favorable to that consideration of both right-of-way and the construction improvements necessary for a future primary arterial. So that is what staff would consider favorable to us for our major thoroughfare plan for the transportation network in Republic. So we find it to be generally consistent with our comprehensive plan, our master plan, our utility master plan, and are recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council about this issue? Alright, I understand that we have Mr. Kotny here that's wishing to speak in favor of this. If you'd like to approach the podium, you will be given, take as long as, no, five minutes, please.
I'll try and keep it short and sweet. Good evening. I'm Sean Kotny with ATW and also Countryland, the current builder out at 60 West and also Old Stone out there. So, working with the city, it's just been a pleasure working with the City of Republic. We're very, very happy to be here. The staff does a great job talking about traffic and all those things. What I want to talk about is the lake. I'm all about fishing and I'm all about helping kids and all this kind of thing. And so we're gonna have approximately a six-acre lake. It's gonna be about eight foot deep on the deep end, transitioning to two to four feet on the shallow end. We're calling it Stone Creek, and I'm gonna collect all the rock on the site and make a man-made ravine river on the north end of it, and the deep end will pump back to the shallow end and be a waterfall falling in. There'll be, if you've seen the pictures, we have a rendering that shows the unit. There's wonderful hiking trails. They're gonna go all the way around it, multiple fishing docks. I'll have fountains. And the key to a fishing lake is aeration, which creates a water column and keeps the lake pretty, no moss, that kind of thing. So it'll be a substantial investment in aeration, and it will be a highly fishable place. And so we are adjacent to your new city sign that's going in, and we really want to try and incorporate that lake view from the sign. And we're trying to think about natural islands in the lake, that kind of thing, for, you know, wildlife, that kind of stuff. So I think will be a positive bonus to the area.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council?
Is that gonna be open to the public or just to that subdivision area?
We're trying to find a way to keep it open to the public. So one of the designs that I've seen, there was a small parking lot with the sign area, and if we can incorporate a way in there, we're gonna try and make that the way it can be parked there. And we'll have, you know, exercise zones and that kind of thing. So it's a substantial.
Yeah, very cool.
Where the waterfall goes across too, it's a loop that goes around that. We're gonna do a bridge that goes across the waterfall. Carney Hamlet will make a really nice ornate metal bridge. It's gonna be excellent.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. Mayor. I do have a comment.
Please.
Sean, I do appreciate your investment in the community. I mean, I know that we worked with you on 60 West, but again, to see this, to see your vision, but we're infrastructure people too, and to see your willingness to work on that intersection, because that is a failed subdivision in the past, and to see that effort with the overall vision of what's going on in MM and your willingness to participate, that is extremely appreciated from a staff level. I appreciate the staff's work on that.
It's a team effort.
Yeah, and so, well, I believe that you're a critical piece of that and what that investment will mean for the corridor coming in, but also how that helps our transportation system, because those of us that are in Republic know that 60 got congested, and we've been fighting very hard to be very protective of the MM corridor. We're still working on right-of-way all through that section to get all the way out to the battlefield. And so I appreciate your willingness to take care of that and help us get that right-of-way secured as well. So, but we also appreciate the fishing pond. But again, thank you for your continued investment in the community.
It's all about the kids.
For us, it's about the transportation.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you being here tonight. Alright, any other citizen comments on this issue? Seeing none, please remember that this is a first read, so if you have questions, what kind of fish are gonna be in the pond, get with staff. Andrew will find out. Alright, moving on to item number seven on our agenda. This is a resolution. This is 21-R-31, a resolution of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving a preliminary plat for Old Savannah Phase 3, a residential subdivision consisting of approximately 22.95 acres located in the 6400 block of South Farm Road 89. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 21-R-31.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Sir?
Old Savannah LLC has requested the review and approval of the preliminary plat of Old Savannah Subdivision Phase 3 located at about 6400 block of South Farm Road 89. Phases 1A, 1B, and 2 of Old Savannah are located directly to the north of this incoming subdivision and will serve to provide streets and utility infrastructure connections for Phase 3. Old Savannah Phase 3 consists of 22.95 acres containing 82 lots, zoned single-family high-density residential. This preliminary plat has been reviewed by city staff and has been found to be, to meet the required review criteria, including it will not endanger public safety nor health, it will not injure the value of surrounding property, it will conform to the various plans and ordinances adopted by the city, and it will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. The preliminary plat depicts the planned creation and connection of necessary infrastructure for the function of the subdivision. Transportation, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater infrastructure, as depicted on the plat, meet all the requirements of city ordinances and will be further reviewed, permitted, and inspected as part of the infrastructure permitting process. All driveways will be located within the subdivision proper, and no lot will have direct access to Williamsburg Walk or Farm Road 89. Staff considers the proposed preliminary plat in general conformity with the requirements for preliminary plats and is recommending approval of the application.
Thank you, sir. Questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I would move this directly to a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, presentation of citizen survey for 2021.
You're up.
Well, I'm Mark Alexson with Opinion Research Specialists, and you may or may not recall, we did the citizen survey in 2018 for the City of Republic, and so we're going back three years later and doing it again. I want to thank David and Jared for helping me navigate all the logistics of getting stuff organized and out and about. So thank you, and also to the staff for their assistance as well. The survey, let me go ahead and... Josh? There we go. Yeah, let me... There we go. Very good. The survey was conducted in the spring. It was conducted from May 4th to, or through June 4th. So on May 4th, we sent out 3,000 six-page questionnaires to 3,000 randomly-selected households in Republic, and they were given two weeks to complete the survey. They were also given the option to complete the survey online if they wanted to. And then after the two weeks were over, then at that point, the survey was made available to the entire public via the survey link that was put on the city's website as well as their Facebook page. It was a different link, so we could differentiate between the responses between the two groups. And when all was said and done, we ultimately ended up with 725 completed questionnaires, which is a very good response. And that means our margin of error, if we do the calculation, it's 3.5%, which is very, very low, and that's what you look for on a survey. So all in all, we were very pleased with the methodological aspect of the survey. And so now let's take a look at what we found. The first set of questions on the survey asked residents to rate Republic on a series of quality-of-life factors. And the highest-rated quality-of-life factors were Republic has a place to live, Republic has a place to raise children, and one's neighborhood in Republic. And all three of those had a positive rating of 90% or higher. And then I might also note, overall quality of life, 89% of those surveyed rated their overall quality of life in Republic as positive. The lowest-rated factors, quality-of-life factors, were public has a place to work and then the water and sewer costs. And the water and sewer costs, they had the highest negative rating of all the factors that we looked at in terms of quality of life. Then residents were asked to rate nine different characteristics of Republic, and Republic's overall image and reputation received the highest rating, 81% positive rating. The city characteristics receiving the lowest positive evaluations were traffic flow and opportunities for recreation and entertainment. And when we compare those 19 either quality-of-life factors or city characteristics from 2018 to this year, 2021, what we look for is, are any changes that are seven percentage points or larger. Those would be what we would call significant changes. And the trends can either be positive or negative, and we found four. And you can see here that the cost of water and sewer services, the variety of places to eat out, and the variety of places to shop improved significantly from 2018. But there was one major decline, and this is showing up on citizen surveys all over the country, not just Republic, but the availability of affordable housing dropped from 72% positive rating to 41%. So a drop of 31%. When I first saw that, I thought, well, maybe there was a mistake, and that was true. And I started looking at other citizen surveys, and they're all, I mean, they're all reporting a decrease from two, three years ago of 20, 30, 40% or more. You know, if you go on the West Coast, it's even more. So that's what we found in terms of the quality of life, the different community characteristics that we looked at. Now, when we asked about the desirability, though, of Republic as a place to live, 61% of respondents said Republic had become a more desirable place to live over the past five years, which is exactly what we found in 2018. And so those numbers are very good. Two new questions that we had asked and added to this year's survey, and we found in both, 92% said that they would recommend, to people who asked, they would recommend Republic as a place to live, and 92% said that they expected to live in Republic for at least the next five years. So those are very good numbers. Terms of perceptions of safety in Republic, they range from a high of 91% who felt safe from violent crimes in Republic to 65% who felt safe from property crimes. In their overall sense of safety in Republic, 85% said that they felt safe. Terms of city government performance, 2/3rds or more of respondents gave the city positive ratings for providing services efficiently, managing growth and development, and being responsive to citizens. We also found, and also 66% came in in terms of the overall performance of the city government, and 6 in 10 rated the city favorably in terms of working through critical issues. In terms of satisfaction with Republic city services, the city services that received the highest levels of satisfaction were the fire department services, the city parks, the police services, and the city recreational centers and facilities. More than 75% of citizens expressed satisfaction with those services. The services that received the lowest ratings were code enforcement, street repair and maintenance, and snow removal, and they all received ratings of dissatisfaction of between 21 and 23%. Overall satisfaction with city services at 70%. Now, when we look at the city services trends compared to 2018, you can see that in four cases, we saw a downturn. City parks, code enforcement, street repair and maintenance, and traffic enforcement had all gone down compared to 2018. The overall value of city services and programs, the, a majority of respondents described the overall value of city services and programs as either very good or good, and about 40% rated it about average, and 10% thought it was either poor or very poor. That was a new question that we added this year. The respondents, at least a majority, or actually more than a majority, but utility bill inserts, they told us were the most effective way of informing citizens, or the effective way of informing citizens about city government and city issues. And that was followed by social media and the city's website. So those were the top three, but certainly utility bill inserts were number one. And that's not unusual. If you look at cities and citizen surveys, utility bill inserts are usually up there. The social media and the website, that's, those are two that if you looked at 10 years ago, they would be at the bottom of this list if they were on the list at all, and now you can see that they're climbing to the top. We break out all these questions also demographically, and if you look at younger people, less than 50 years old, for example, or people that have children in the household, you will see these numbers change. And in particular, you'll see anything involving social media or websites and stuff as probably their preference as opposed to traditional media or even utility bill inserts. So things are changing as new generations come up and older generations move on. Well, 52% of respondents reported having either telephone or in-person contact with Republic citizen, Republic city employees in the past 12 months, and that was down from 67% in 2018, but that is to be expected due to COVID-19 and the restrictions. So that was down a little bit. But more importantly, of those 52% that did have interaction either in-person or telephone contact with a city employee over the past 12 months, you can see that, you know, a large percentage, the vast majority, were satisfied with their encounters on a variety of measures ranging from being courteous to how easy it was to contact them to the employees being knowledgeable and informed, all the way down to their issue or concern being resolved in a timely manner. In fact, the overall experience, nearly hit 80% of those in contact with city employees had, were either very satisfied or satisfied with that interaction. The respondents were then asked to rate their level of interest in six new projects that were being considered by the Parks and Recreation Department. And the JR Martin Park Boulevard and the Outdoor Adventures at Brooklyn Park, those two garnered the most interest of the six that we looked at. I did a little deeper dive into this demographically, and if you look at respondents who are less than 50 years old and/or have children in the household, the percentage of people who are very interested in that group in the top three projects here, it ranged from anywhere from 61 to 74%. So if you're younger, if to middle age, and if you have children in the household, all three of those, at least 60% of those groups were very interested, and as many as 74% were interested. Well, the survey respondents told us that direct mail and social media were the most preferred ways to communicate with them about parks and recreation department programs and events. Once again, if you look at it demographically a little closer, we found that respondents who were less than 50 years old, social media was their preferred method. 70% said that was the case. So these methods of either being informed or communicating, once again, can vary by demographics. But if you take the, as a whole, this is what we're finding here in terms of overall. And then kind of wrapping it up here, and this is just kind of a very quick overview. It was a six-page questionnaire, but we found that more than 90% of respondents had moved to Republic. Less, only 7% were classified themselves as lifelong residents. And out of the group that, in that 90% that had moved to Republic, 40% had, or almost 40%, had previously of the group that, in that 90% that had moved to Republic, 40% had, or almost 40% had previously lived in Springfield, 21% had lived within 30 miles of Republic excluding Springfield. So you've got basically 60% of those who had moved to Republic, which is almost everybody, 93%, so 60% approximately came from within 30 miles around Republic. And finally, among those who had moved to Republic, when we asked what was the primary reason for doing so, 35% said it was to be closer to family and friends, and 22% mentioned the price of housing and land. And that is a quick overview of the 2021 survey, and does anyone have any questions?
Seeing no questions. Does city staff have a takeaway from this, or are we still digesting it?
Well, I mean, again, we were, first and foremost, thank you for the work that was done on the survey. It's always a pleasure to work with you on this, and we always trust results. I think seeing how many people responded is very helpful, I think comparing it to the years previous, but I think it speaks to what we're trying to do, is to, we're not just trying to lead the organization, we know we're a growing city, we know there's a lot of challenges that we're facing, but to get the feedback of the community is important to us, and I think that trying to demonstrate that is very important. Seeing some of the things that are in there, I'm extremely grateful to see that people believe in our, in our public safety, meaning what I mean by that is they feel safe, but I think it's interesting, too, to see that our streets are the part, and that's, that's a big challenge in some of the stuff that we're working on, but when I look at the need for why people are coming to our community, what they're locating for, and what they enjoy about, or the services they're providing, I think it's, it's very promising, but, you know, as we continue to grow, there'll be growing pains, and I look forward to the surveys of the future because that's a lot of what we need to be paying attention, what is the pulse. I think the inserts of mailing things, I think that's one of the things I asked Jared, I think that was, again, in the previous survey, was a similar response. We went away from the inserts probably more than, we went more to publications, believing that just being a mass mailing was important, so I think the takeaway is there's a lot to still learn, that people still open their utility bill and read it.
They do.
So I thought it was very well-rounded, I was very, very proud of our community for responding the way they did and for the work to get the responses we did. I appreciate the staff for continuously pushing the message out to get the responses that we receive, but very proud of our community for stepping up and getting it done.
Yeah, the results from Republic compared to other communities that we work with, you should be, you know, very pleased where you are, and when you start looking at things like overall quality of life, feeling, perceptions of safety and so forth, they're really high, and so there's, you know, cities that would really like to have these numbers as opposed to the numbers that they currently have, so, and Republic's always been very solid, so it's a growing city, though, that's the, that's the thing, you've got a lot of challenges, but so far, you know, our numbers show over the years that you've met it, and it's that traffic flow thing, that that hits a lot of communities, a lot of growing communities, the ones that aren't growing, they don't have that problem, so.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't need a survey to know those comments.
No, because I drove in at 5:30 from Springfield, and
Yeah.
And I haven't done that in a while, and I was amazed at...
Yeah, those comments flow in frequently.
Yes, yes, I'm sure they do.
Thank you very much for your time.
Really good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You want to go?
Yeah, I'll go.
All right.
Cool. First and foremost, it's good to be back, I had enjoyed a nice time away with my family, so I appreciate everybody for allowing me to take that time, it was very nice, had a lot of transition, had a couple of kids get married, and I'm in the empty nest zone, so I'm here for you guys even more now, so, because my wife didn't want me in the house, but it was, it was a great time away, I want to thank all the staff and all the work that the city continues to move forward, and I don't have to be sitting in that chair for everything to get done, and I appreciate the fact that things transitioned, and we've got to make decisions, and development continues to go on, and so facing those challenges. So coming back, obviously, we have a significant ballot measure that is going on August 3rd, so I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday, we're doing something we have not done, again, just part of the overall transparency of the measure, is we will be doing a virtual town hall meeting to answer any questions, to just open up to whatever it is, I mean, some of the feedback that I've received and just questions that still need to continue to be answered, that's why we're doing it, there's nothing for us to, to hide behind, we want to be fully transparent what we're talking about, and any question for me, as I'm going to be on, I think it's RepMo Radio this Thursday, we've been on every social media, or social media platform and media platform in the last few days, and so I just encourage everyone to get out, also, and vote on August 3rd. That's why we put it out for the people's consideration, it is for their consideration, it's a question, it's not a mandate, it's a question. I think when you see that, it's a question that we're asking the community, so I appreciate that this council allowed this to go out to the community for that consideration, it's something we believe in, that we've worked on very hard, and that we wanted to get that message out, so just encourage everyone, if they can, to participate in the virtual meeting, but also at the same time, reach out if you have any questions, we have public email addresses, public phone numbers, and so we're always available. The one question I have seen is about the city's audit, our city audited financials are on our, on our website, they're there from all the last five years, that you can find that information as well as our budget, so some of that stuff, we'll help provide better links to navigate to get into those pieces. I'm going to end with another project that I am extremely proud of our community for, and we got to listen to it a little bit this morning at the Springfield Business Journal, 12 People You Need to Know, which was our partner on the Amazon project, which was Tom Rankin, and he was recognized, and so it was nice to see that, but listening to it, but the reminder was on June 2nd of 2020, we, you know, I took the text from Tom that there was a million square feet, we kind of knew that night who, you know, who a million square feet was going to be, but I want to commend our staff because in less than 10 months, on August 1st, we will, they will be occupying that building and running orders out of that facility. That's 10 months to build 1.3 million square feet, and number one, that's a testament, number one, to Amazon and their stealth nature to get things built, but I want you to understand that the navigating, the approval process to get that highway done, to get those inspections done, our crews are walking miles to do the inspections inside of this building. I could look, Dwayne, I know the fire pumps, I know every single detail, I've heard every single compliment, I know everything that our team has done, I watched it firsthand to go the extra mile to, and I don't want to say compromise who we are, what we do, but to stretch to help them achieve their objective. That's only helping our cause and the messaging that we are open for business, and we're trying to do these things to improve our community, to improve our tax base, so we don't have to keep asking for additional, we want to grow it, it's not growing for the sake of growing, and so I think that it's important to recognize our staff and our team, our community that's come along, because I cannot imagine who, if I lived out there, this transportation, the noise, the heavy equipment, it's probably been a rough 10 months, so I want to thank them for their patience, but for what the staff has had to do to issue what we call a temporary CFO this week, I want to thank you. You know, I've not walked 10 steps inside that building, but that staff has done all the work, and to provide and deliver that for our community, and I know that they're very grateful, but today, we sit there and listen to our community get recognized over and over again for the work that we did, and what kept going through my mind is if you go out there a year ago, if you all recall, I took you all on a tour, and we were standing on a gravel road, I would like for you to drive out there today, and you'll see the completed street that was done last week, that is the gateway to the Amazon, on the backside of Amazon, to the new McLean facility that's currently under construction. If you're like us junkies that we see that, I mean that by construction junkie, sorry, I better clarify.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. They're still going up on the new building, and so every time we see it, it's not just a 1.3 million convoy of hope is getting ready to, you know, eventually launch into the next phase of their project, we're excited, we're having a meeting with them, a special one that we just called, I need to tell you about two, by the way, for Friday at 9 o'clock, and so I just want to tell you that I'm extremely proud of this community, I'm extremely proud of our staff, and I just appreciate the opportunity to lead and serve, but also appreciate the opportunity that we can bring questions to our community in a civil manner, and we will do that with as much transparency, class, and professionalism as possible, well, we will, but I just want to commend the staff for your work, this council for allowing us to do our job, because I think we get asked all the time, how does it go so smoothly? It starts in this chamber, which allows us to do our jobs well, but I'm just glad to be back, because I would just say buckle up and hang on, because it's just, we're getting ready to go to phase two, I guess, or maybe phase three or four, but yeah, we don't know when we're going to get to sleep.
Yeah, sleep's overrated.
It is. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council. Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to say, I had a family function this weekend where we had a barbecue, and one of the things we discussed was the Amazon, and a lot of the people that I was in discussion with were all developers from the West Coast, up North, and out East, and as soon as I gave them kind of an indication on the timeline of Amazon, jaws dropped, just no one could believe it, so very thankful and appreciative for that. Our conversation stopped because we had to eat hamburgers and hot dogs, but yeah, great discussion. And again, August 3rd, time to vote, one of the things people always relay to me is I didn't know it was the vote, so there's plenty of stuff around for people to vote, come out and vote. The citizen survey, thank you to all the citizens that decided to fill that out and give us our input, that is very valuable, and so I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm also appreciative of all the people that decided to volunteer and serve the City of Republic on all the boards and appointments this evening, very impressive, and that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other reports from council? All right, seeing none? I would like to do a short report, and I'm preaching to the choir here in this room, so I apologize. We don't say "I" very often here in Republic, it's "we." We do this, we do that, it is a team approach, and I know that, but we, right here, did not do a very good job of explaining what happened this morning. David, Andrew, and I went to the Springfield Business Journal's 12 People You Ought to Know, and it is a room full of businesspeople from Springfield, we've got developers, we've got builders, I mean, big-name people, right? And Tom Rankin, sitting up there on the platform, being interviewed by the Springfield Business Journal, notice I keep saying Springfield, and Tom spends his 45 minutes talking about Republic, and not just Republic, David and Andrew, I mean, I said at the end, I should have kept a tally of how many times Tom said "Republic," because it was over 100, and I'm not joking, it was literally over 100. And he just said, "Republic's the place." I mean, I'm paraphrasing, because he had to be political, because it was a room full of Springfield people. A Springfield City Council member asked him a question, I mean, it was a room full of Springfield people. And the reason I tell you all this is because we don't pat each other on the back very often. Well, I get that, and that is a good team mentality, but I'm going to pat somebody on the back.
Nice.
This is the cover of 417 Biz, and our leader is on the cover of 417 Biz. Andrew, that don't look like you. Yeah. Here's the thing, Tom Rankin was talking about Republic over and over and over and over again, because somebody saw a lottery ticket when they did a job interview here, and it was this guy right here, and he has developed a great team. I joke about how I don't ever get to ask questions on the presentations, because you guys answer all the questions I could possibly come up with, well, some of them, I come up with questions, but my point here is, the captain of the team Is starting to get notoriety. And he's never going to pat himself on the back, so I'm going to take a second to do it, because, guys, this isn't the Springfield City Administrator on 417 Biz, this is a Republic City Administrator.
God.
Yeah. And he deserves that. So my report is, we're pretty darn lucky, we are lucky because of this guy and the team that he has put together, so thank you.
Thank you for bringing that out to the light, but I will say
Will you sign it?
Yeah, on the ground. I wish our entire team could be on that thing.
Yeah.
I'm proud of them. Thank you.
And with that, we have executive session, right?
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion and a second for adjournment, and entering into executive session, no further action other than the announced adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. Would anyone care to make that motion?
Motion.
Second. We've got a motion and a second, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
I've seen that.
Aye.
I saw her lips move.
I didn't see her, I didn't hear.
I've got my mother so long.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?